Town of Lewisboro Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven thirty P M. Before I go any further, I am going to confirm that Kirsten has started recording this meeting, which I see. And this meeting is happening via Zoom with live streaming to YouTube, which is available on the Lewisboro TV channel. The public can view the meeting there, and we have confirmed that the feed is active and working. Note that in accordance with the governor's executive orders, known as at our usual meeting location at seventy-nine Bauton. I've also confirmed with Kirsten, the Planning Board Administrator, that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements have been fulfilled. Notice has been placed on the town of Lewisboro website and included in the email distributions from the town and the library, and it has been posted on Facebook. Joining me on this Zoom conference from the town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board. I know Greg La Source is here, Rich Sklarin, and myself. I don't know. Oh, and Jerome has joined us. I did not see Maureen come in, but with four members, we do have a quorum, and thus we can vote on any matters that do come before the board. Also with us are the Planning Wetland Consultant, Jan Johansson, and our Council, Judge Seabird. Also Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conran and the CAC Chair John Wolf. The Governor's Executive Order number two oh two dot one, which has been renewed, enables the Planning Board to meet remotely and electronically to function on behalf of the town. In accordance with the executive order, we intend to post both the recording and later a transcript of this meeting to the town website. It will also be available on the town's YouTube channel, and of course, actions will be documented in meeting minutes. We have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. That is the only time we expect to take public comments, and I will describe the process in a minute. The public, any members of the public have joined muted and without video until that point. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises, and I, I think with practice, we've all gotten a lot better at managing this. To those whose lines are open, I remind you that we should do our best to avoid crosstalk, and if possible, to mute ourselves until it's necessary to talk. To ease the recording of our votes, I will poll board members individually. Okay, so let's get started. We will start with a public hearing. Let me talk about the process. The purpose of the public hearing is for members of the public to understand the proposal in order to express to the board concerns and comments. These comments should be addressed to the Planning Board. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue, and in general, the board will not respond to comments during the public hearing. The board will take public input into consideration as we continue to review the application. Again, let me just put on the record that because of Executive Order two oh two dot one zero, we are not meeting at a common location. We're holding the meeting via via video and telephone in accordance with Executive Order two oh two dot one five. We have invited public comments by email before the meeting, and I just confirmed with Kirsten that we do not yet have any email comments. The public can comment during the hearing by sending an email to our normal planning email. It's planning@lewisburorgov.com. And in addition, the public can speak at the meeting. So if the public wishes to speak at the meeting, please raise your Zoom hand. To do that, if you are on Zoom, if you put your cursor at the bottom of the window, you should see an image of people labeled participants. Click on that to get a panel on the right-hand side with icons at the bottom. You can then click Raise Hand. Participants who have raised their hand will show up on the host screen in order that you raise your hand, and we will then unmute you and tell you you have the floor. Depending upon whether your microphone is active, you may have to unmute yourself as well. I do see this one person in the waiting room that's on a phone. Can, should we?
I've been trying to chat with them to state their name, and they haven't.
Yeah, on a phone number, they might not be seeing that. But I was going to say, if you have dialed in on a phone like this one person, you can raise your hand to indicate you want to talk by pressing star nine. We ask people to give their name and address upon entering and to keep their comments to three minutes. And while I certainly don't expect this to happen, someone who is disrespectful at this meeting will be asked to leave the virtual meeting just as they would be asked to leave a physical meeting. Again, I want to mention, I believe we now have one person on the phone. If you want to raise your hand to indicate that you want to talk during the public hearing, you press star nine. So the first meeting on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing on MacArthur and Salazar Residence at forty Old Pond Road, South Salem, New York. This is an application for wetland activity and stormwater permits in connection with the construction of a lakeside residence and cottage. We opened the public hearing on August eighteenth and adjourned it to today. So we have received no new submissions, but I believe we may have some new reports here. So should we start with the, anything the applicant wants to tell us?
Hey, Janet, it's Bill here. Well, we, we conducted a site visit, and I would let Jan and Alan comment. I would say was quite positive. I think we have good understanding of the next steps, and we're working hard to submit our project so we can be in front of this planning board in October.
Great. Okay. Jan, would you like to give us a summary of the, a report of your site visit?
Sure. I conducted a site walk along with Alan Pilch, the owner, Billy MacArthur, and representative of the Westchester Land Trust. I don't know, maybe two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. We walked the property. We also walked the adjacent Land Trust property. I had an opportunity to speak to the representative from the Land Trust about some of the the protocol for the, for the invasive species removal. And I had a concern originally that they're proposing to remove the Japanese barberry and other invasives by means of burning them, you know, which is, you know, widely accepted practice by the D E C and others and, you know, locations where it kind of makes sense. But myself and the rep from the Land Trust had a similar kind of reaction to that, and because of the remote nature of the parcel and the steep slope and the surrounding woodlands and the dry season that we've had, I didn't think that was maybe the best approach to remove the invasives. So we talked about maybe having them cut flush to the ground surface and then treated with an herbicide. Removing them by the roots on the steep slope would probably cause erosion adjacent to the lake, which wasn't something that we're interested in. So I think the best method for the removal is going to be cutting, cutting them flush to the ground and then treating them.
Say treating there, you would, that would be just painting the stems or would that be a broadcast spray?
I would imagine it'd be painting the stems. Obviously, there, I think Steve Coleman's going to be working on a program, a written narrative of how invasives will be mitigated and monitored, and I would expect them to be painted, but, you know, that, that's a document that we're waiting to receive, I think, for the October submission.
Right.
So I felt real comfortable about what was taking place on the Land Trust parcel. We walked that swale, the drainage swale down, and they pointed out to me where they wanted to put the Gabion baskets, and I thought that made a lot of sense. So I was, I was kind of on board with their program. We also talked about one of the comments from the CAC, which was that that the tank that they have down below to collect the stormwater and detain the stormwater, the detention tank is currently being proposed to outlet at a single location, and I think there was a desire to have that split, so it wasn't all going to one particular area. And the applicant indicated that they would make their best effort to comply with the request and try to split the discharge. We also talked about the comments that came back from the fire department and how they may be handled, and I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'll ask Billy or someone for the project team to kind of reiterate what was discussed or what they had indicated to me and how they planned on responding to those. But, you know, I think that I think that a lot of the comments are in process, you know, that they're going to be responding to them in an appropriate manner. And I'd expect that the October submission will be complete. And I think we're with some additional information that's been requested. I think we'll, we'll be in a good place, but I feel comfortable with the mitigation. We also talked about some additional plantings along the lake edge to try to maximize the onsite mitigation to the extent possible. They were on board with that. So as Billy mentioned, very positive meeting, and I think they're headed in the right direction.
Okay. Any comments or questions from, I, I know we don't have any new submission materials, but from the board, anyone have a more comments, questions, or thoughts on this? Yes.
Well, I, I hope we'll have some comment on the building inspector's comments regarding this road frontage issue and whether or not there'll be some remediation or variance request.
There will be. The, the building inspector has come out and indicated that it is a private road, as suspected, that they require two different variances. One is a two eighty A variance under the New York State town law. The second variance is a frontage variance under our local zoning. I do not believe that those applications have been made, but they're, they're, they will be required. And I, I'd like if the applicant's willing just to discuss some of the mitigation items that we discussed at the field.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll just, Italian pillage. Maybe I can just indicate that with, so with regard to the South Salem Fire Department request for about a dry hydrant. When we were out there, we concur that due to the elevation change from the lake up to Old Pond Road and the distance that it is, that it really made, it was not practical to have a dry hydrant in that location. But as an alternative, what we said we would do is we would have sprinklers in both the lakeside cottage and the studio cabana buildings. I just want to make sure that that goes, it's noted.
Okay, and that'll be on any new plans submitted?
That will be on their plans.
Actually, and, and thanks for bringing that up, Janet. One, one of the, one of the comments from Theo who's, who's on, and tell me if you want to comment on this, but I think those have to be designed by, by an expert. And so the question for, for us is, this is going to be noted in Theo's plans, but we would ask that this would become, you know, an item for us to, to complete once this has been approved by the planning board.
And I, I would completely agree with that. I don't think the board needs to be reviewing the sprinkler plans, but just a commitment from the applicant that both buildings would be sprinkled. That would be carried over in any future resolution and then can be dealt with with the building inspector. I think with, like, with your resubmission in October, you'd be expecting some sort of written confirmation that that's your, that's what you're planning to do.
And any, I, I honestly have no idea whether that means that there you need to have a reservoir somewhere or how it would work. So, and I'm sure that's part of what you're going to be asking. So, you know, I think just having it indicated that that will be part of the final residence would, would be, is something that we need to see.
Yep.
Okay. I have gotten through, through Kirsten a message from Maureen that she is, at the last minute, she's unable to join us tonight. So that's where we stand on that. So I, again, if anyone, member of the public, I don't see anyone on wishes to make a comment or someone on the phone wishes to make a comment, you can do it by raising your hand, by putting your, your cursor on the window and clicking on participants and then clicking on Raise Hand. Or if you're on the phone, you can do it by star nine. But I do not see any, anyone commenting. I think we, we know that we're going to have more information, so I think the wise thing for us to do is to adjourn this again until the next, our next meeting, which is October twentieth, if that's agreeable to everyone. Looking for nods. Okay, yes, Greg. Okay. So, and so I think with that, we, we look forward. I'm going to remind you that the resubmission date is, I believe, September twenty ninth. And we look forward to getting more information from you then.
Thank you, team.
Okay, great. Yes, somebody calling me? Oh, Judd, you have to.
Yeah, and just a reminder, can you hear me? The audio is.
Yes.
Okay. And, and just a reminder that, you know, the October meeting, it's a likelihood that it will be conducted remotely by Zoom again, but that will be dependent on an extension of the current executive order. So anyone who is viewing or listening, that public hearing may continue either Zoom as we are tonight, or it could potentially be an in-person meeting at a location selected by the town. So please just keep an eye on the agenda when published as to those specifics.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that I don't think there's anything preventing the applicant from making applications to the Z B A if it hasn't already for the additional two variances.
Great, thank you, Jan. Anything else? Okay, so thank you all, and we will move on to the second item on the agenda, which is a sketch plan review. Calendar number oh three dash twenty P B and calendar number thirty-seven dash twenty W P. Gossip Brothers Nursery, one two oh two Route thirty-five, South Salem, New York. An application for site development plan approval and a wetland activity permit approval for an existing nursery. And this is in conjunction with a a special permit for a winery on the same site. Gossip Brothers appeared before us on October, sorry, on August eighteenth and are back again tonight. We still have some lead agency still open. We're waiting for some responses. So that, that is still going on. We have referred this to the county. And I thought that perhaps it would be helpful, even though we're still waiting on some of the procedural items, to have, to continue our discussions and to talk about where, where we might see some, might want some more information. And to reference that we did get a letter from the building inspector, so I want to make sure that the applicant does have that. So I guess I see the Gossits and Tim are on. Yeah, okay. So the first thing I did want to mention, I, I appreciate receiving the, the business plan. I and I didn't want to wait two months especially to tell you that I think I, I would like to see this fleshed out a little bit more. I, I looked at some of the things on the website, and they don't match some of the items that are on the business plan, and so I'm sure there's some way to to sort of expand it. The website talks about a farmer's market on both Saturdays and Wednesdays, and that it's year-round. The the business plan that we got sort of talks about it being in business April through December. I think it would also help if part of the business plan, when you get to the winery part, talks about some of the items that are in the special permit, so that we just have sort of a way to say they're in accord. So for example, you know, there's some, the, the special permit language has things that say at least eighty percent of the grapes have to be grown in the state. Well, you know, if you just say that, you know, then we have it, or I think a little bit more of a definition of how many seeds there might be at wine tastings versus wine by the glass versus, you know, events, or just a little bit more description of what all these would be, I think would help me. And I also would like to know a little bit more about, as we, as we encountered at a prior nursery that we talked about. We talked about delivery times, when the trucks came, where do they go? You know, how is that managed? Is there a loading zone for some of the products you send off or that are larger than a retail customer might buy, you know? So I think just a little bit more would, would be very helpful to me on that.
I'll take that, I'll take that as a list, and I will certainly write those down, and then we can address those. That would be, that'd be good.
Yeah, I think it will also, it just helps document some of the things that we're trying to deal with here. So.
Great, okay.
I know the business plan came in a little late. We need to review it, but probably be helpful to have a business plan, and if it wasn't presented this way for both the nursery and the winery, so we can understand the different hours of operation and how the two kind of are consistent or inconsistent with each other, especially with regards to hours of operation and parking and demand and that sort of thing. The deliveries of the plant material. If you have a couple of uses on the same property, it probably makes sense to have separate business plans so we can understand.
They do cover hours of operation, Jan. You know, the difference.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
And, and I also thought, you talk about, for example, the, the vendors for the farmer's market park around in the back. Well, maybe that's, I don't actually know whether that would count as additional, I mean, some of the parking spaces that you might have that, or whether they don't. I, I honestly don't know, but I, I think a little bit more information on that. The other thing is that parking, I think the special permit actually says, you know, there should be X number of off-street parking spaces in addition to those required in this chapter for the business to which the accessory use is granted. So I think I know we have the ability to vary that, but it would help to know how many that are supposed to be there to start with, that we could then say we're, we're granting a change to that. So, and I think that's basically based on square footage, and I know the building inspector did ask for more details about the the, the square footage of the various buildings that are on site.
Good. I think that's very helpful. We kind of went into it a little bit vague, but now that we have more direct questions to answer, we'll, we'll be happy to do that. I think that's, that's very helpful.
Great. Well, I, again, that's, I, I wanted, I think it's, it's important to try to, you know, move this, keep the process moving. So I, that's part of the reason that we wanted you here.
Thanks. We appreciate.
Any comments from anyone else on the board?
I'm just looking at the August twenty-four memo, just a little bit confused on the hours. It talks about nursery hours, April through December, nine A M. to five P M. That's every day?
Yep.
All right. So then, then it says business hours for the winery, three to eight P M. So, and that's same days, and then it goes on to say private events we offered after nursery hours only. I'm just trying to mesh together.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? You broke up for one.
Oh, I'm sorry. My signal's better. Okay, I'm sorry. The business hours for the winery talks about three to eight.
Right.
Okay, so that's this potentially the same seven days that a little overlap for the regular hours.
No, I'm sorry. Can you, am I, am I on?
There you go, John. You're good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's my mistake. I'm reading that now. No, the winery is only going to be open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays for tastings.
Okay, and then it's.
That needs to be changed, yeah.
Okay, so, and that's, so it says three to eight, so it's overlap for the regular nursery hours of nine to five?
Yes.
Okay, and then it says private events offered after nursery hours. So that means, is that the same three to eight, or is it, I don't know what the?
Well, no, after the nursery closes at five. So if we were going to have a private event, it would start after, you know, six o'clock or after five.
Okay, so it's the whole, the total range is like until eight o'clock or later potentially? I don't know.
On a private event, you know, it, it could go later. I'm assuming in ten o'clock or something like that.
Okay.
But three to eight is going to be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Just, you know, getting, getting people to do tastings. We're not in Napa Valley, and, you know, people aren't coming around Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to do tastings in this area. So.
Right. I wanted to know, like, from the, like, if it's on a Saturday, to cut it off at eight o'clock. I don't know what your ability to go later, or if you're looking to go later, that's all.
Yeah. While we were open, we realized we're not serving dinner there, so it's kind of, you know, after, after a certain amount of time, people aren't coming to the winery. It's more of a you know, an event, you're not staying there and having Z D and Austin Buco and spending the night.
Okay, thanks.
And, and I guess the, the other thing I would ask is, right now at least, is there any conflict between, you know, you're not serving fill meals and the requirement that the, you know, the COVID opening has on, you have to at least have some food that's, you know, more than, I think, a bag of potato chips or something to, to provide at the same time. Is, is there any conflict there? Are you able to handle that?
Believe it or not, that has been the, I'm not sure how, I think COVID is almost forcing the food, but the New York State law always has been, when I opened up the winery, and I think has been that way for many years. If you're going to serve wine by the glass, then food of substance must be served, and food of substance could be, you know, charcuterie and cheese. It can't be crackers and peanuts. That you can, that you can do with a tasting, that is allowed, but once you serve somebody a glass, you, you have to have it offered to them, but now with COVID, I've heard people saying that you, I heard somebody tell me that if somebody ordered a beer, they got a two-dollar hot dog with the beer, and that was a law now. And that's a COVID thing, but I'm not going to open till April. And, but the New York State law has always been, you cannot serve wine by the glass unless you're serving food of substance.
Okay.
So we will try to serve food of substance.
And I see Jerome has a question, yes.
Yeah, with this evening function, I would expect that there'd be some site lighting. I don't know if that's been contemplated at this point, but.
Yeah, yeah, we had a discussion with Jan on that, so we'll be.
Site lighting plan will be provided.
Okay, great. Well, I think. I'd like the fact that you're, you know, being responsive and going to try to keep moving this whole thing forward and we'll see if we can can keep it going. I expect we will get the lead agency responses all by the next meeting and we'll be able to take some of the procedural steps as well.
We could just get an indication from the applicant when they plan on making the submission to the ZBA for the special permit.
I believe that's been made. I think they're on the agenda for the end of this month. Billy can confirm that in time. But one of the things that I wanted to discuss tonight was the parking that we're showing and what we're going to do for land bank. Because that's going to dictate to some extent what we do with the site plan. The current proposal and what was outlined in my letter was briefly that we have I believe it's thirteen spaces on the south side of the nursery, which is between the nursery and thirty-five. And I believe another eight spaces in the back for the farmer's market employees and for Tom's employees. You know, that seems to be the general number that's there right now, although we'll define it a little bit more clearly in the site plan and Tom will put down some type of little reveal curve to also define those spaces. So we're looking at twenty-one active spaces. And when we had our conversation with Jan Johansson, he mentioned that those spaces will have to be, you know, active spaces and available at all times, which is fine. We realize that. So with those twenty-one spaces, we're also looking to land bank an additional twenty-one spaces, all of which would be located on the north side of the building. And just looking.
All of, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All of which would be located where?
Excuse me, twenty-one additional land bank spaces. And I believe six of those would be at the on the southwest corner where the farmer's market is now. And additional I think would then be fifteen spaces on the north side or in the back of the building. But, you know, in forty, forty-five years of being in business, there's never really been a need for that. So we're comfortable if we, you know, with the numbers that I've just presented, I think that, you know, Tom, based on his history and working with John on the winery, he feels a pretty good number. We, you know, we, I think as far as parking in the front goes, we're pretty much limited to the thirteen. That would be twelve regular and one handicap. And then any additional spaces, if it's required by the board, they would all be on the north side of the back of the building.
I think I would just. Yes. So I understand. I think I think we want to try to make sure that we don't have excess space that isn't, that aren't going to be used. I'll just comment that the accessory winery special purpose code does say there should be no fewer than ten off-street parking spaces in addition to those required for the business to which the accessory use is attached. So we, I sort of, I feel like I can't. I want to say we don't need any more than, you know, is really going to be used, but I sort of feel like I'm not sure what the what the actual code would currently require for this use. So we haven't some idea how how close we are to that number.
And I think the bulk zoning table and parking calculation table on the plan. So they they go through the code.
Okay.
The specific parking parameters for the different uses and they come up with what's required by the code is to be zoning compliant. And then they're backing off that number based on what they actually need. And that the delta would be what's going to be land banked. But I would just suggest that they provide something in writing that demonstrates through their history and operating what the parking need is. So we have something in writing from them that establishes the required number or the spaces that we're actually going to have physically located out there.
Would that be, I guess that'd be appropriate to put and add that into the business plan?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Now, just to further on what Jan just mentioned. In the site plan that was submitted last month, we showed a total of spaces required of twenty-six. And if you recall, the building inspector had a comment that, you know, we can't round down. So if you have ten point, you need ten point two, it actually comes to eleven. So now we actually, we need twenty-seven spaces. And we're proposing the twenty-one would be active. And then we're land banking an additional twenty-one. So that gets us a total of forty-two spaces when the code actually requires only twenty-seven. And that also includes the ten spaces that are necessary for the winery. So it's going to be a matter of mix and match. And I think, you know, between Tom and John, it's going to, I think we'll be able to present clearly that the operate, the primary operation of the winery is going to be at the end of the day or into the evening. Whereas the primary utilization at the nursery is going to be, say, from nine in the morning till one in the afternoon. So, you know, there's going to be, although I think it was mentioned that, you know, there's going to be, there's an overlap of when they're open, say from three to five PM. The use of the nursery at that point is it's certainly not as heavy as it is in the morning. So but that's all stuff we can go through a little bit more clearly on the business plan.
Right. And thank you, Jan. I hadn't, I had forgotten or did not remember certainly that they, that there was something on the plans and I'll go take a look at that. I see Jerome has his hand up.
Yeah, the business plan has a statement that says the party size of events which were mentioned by the applicant will be determined by Department of Health allowances. Which is a strange statement to me. I mean, it seems to me, can you get your clarification on that? Typically, it would be by the number of tables or lacking tables, maybe some square footage. But what, what restriction or allowance does the Department of Health have on?
Well, right now, Jerome, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, so right now we're waiting for the Department of Health to actually, they're going to be the ones who tell us how much seating that we'll be able to have in that size. And then that's going to determine how many people we're going to be able to have there. Because I think there's some sort of capacity. Like we can't have seating for fifty in there.
No, but that you think that would be a building department or a space allocation, not a Department of Health issue. Anyway.
Yes.
Like an anomaly.
A health department issue because of, you know, septic.
That's a different story, yeah.
So but we just don't want to leave it open ended on our end. So, you know, as you go through the process and you determine that number through the health department.
Yes.
That number is because we're going to have to we're going to have to include that in.
Right. And we're hoping to be there soon. So we know, because that's going to mean a lot to me, what I can do as well going forward.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any, any other comments? I don't think I don't think we have anything else that we have to either refer or anything at this point. So I think we can just say we look forward to your submission and we will see you when when the submission is due. Oh, John, did you raise your hand? No. No.
No, just scratching.
Okay. All right. So I think that's it. We'll see you then again in in October, assuming we have the submission on time.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
See you then.
Thank you all. Okay, bye bye.
Bye. So the next item on the agenda is calendar number oh four dash twenty PB. This is the Alpert to Orlinsky lot line change on Old Church Lane, South Salem, New York. This is an application for a lot line change between owner of record Alpert and owner of record, the Orlinskis. So I'm not sure who is speaking for.
Corey Alpert is here. I'm here.
Hi.
Hi.
So could you tell us a little bit about why what is, what is happening here and why you want the lot change?
Okay, so I used to own ninety-two Old Church Lane. I also owned Zero Old Church Lane and sold ninety-two Old Church Lane back last April of nineteen and beaded him a piece of property that was an old driveway where they, they said the driveway would come off of Old Church Lane, cross over a stream, go through wetlands, and then and then the house was going to be built in the Zero Old Church Lane lot off of Lost Nations Road. So I assume that they probably would never let you do that off of Zero Old Church Lane. He was, you know, wanting to buy that piece of property that I had there. So he would have, you know, no worries about a driveway going through. I said, no problem. They've already built two houses up on Lost, on Lost Nations Road, Teddy Childs property and the old Giacchio property. I'm not sure who bought that recently. So there is a road there. So I was going to just get rid, beat him and change the lot line. So he would have that strip off of Zero Old Church Lane. I would keep my four point one acres off of Lost Nations Road and eventually get a building permit and sell it or possibly build something and then sell it. So basically, it was just to give him that extra property on the right side of his ninety-two Old Church Lane.
Okay, so if I understand the process correctly, and I'll ask Jan to talk about it, what, what we have to do is make sure that the new the new lot, the smaller lot that would be off of Lost Nations Road is zoning compliant.
No, the Lost Nations lot is the four point zero acres. I was beading him zero point eight acres off of Old Church Lane.
Right. But the the result will be a smaller parcel.
It would be, right. Instead of four point eight, it would be four point zero one or something.
Right.
At this point.
So we just have to make sure that that is when we create a new lot, it has to fit within the guidelines and the determination of what a lot should be in terms of contiguous building area and all that. So which I'm probably getting into something that Jan was about to say. So why don't I ask Jan to comment on this?
Great. Hi, Jan.
Hi. I happen to have the plan, I think.
Yes, you should have the new, the new plan, new survey.
Yeah, that's not the lot line change map.
I have one here if you want to show it. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, hang on one second, Jerome. I could see if I could share my screen here.
Okay.
Here we go. All right. I don't know if you can see the map?
Yeah, there you go.
The I have a couple, I have like three screens going, three different maps up. Do you see the subdivision map or the lot line change map with the the charts over here to the left?
Yeah.
So let me just orient you here. This is Old Church Lane on the right hand side. There's a parcel here that's developed with a single family house with access off, off Old Church. And then there's this flag lot that has access off Old Church, which I think is being described as Zero Old Church Lane. It also has front on Lost Nations Road. And what's happening is they're proposing to take this rectangle here that's on the east side of the stream. It fronts on Old Church and convey that to parcel A with the house to make that parcel larger. Because that would protect this resident here from any future access going through this strip. The parcel in the back that remain there would have access off Lost Nations Road, which I believe is a private road. And any future development or driveway would have to come off Lost Nations.
It's a private road, but that parcel also has, the four point acre parcel does have an easement for that road. It used to be the old Stanford watershed property. So there is an easement in the title indeed of Zero Old Church Lane off of Lost Nations.
Right. So this parcel here is getting smaller by deducting this piece. And I guess our main couple of comments. If the applicant doesn't have the comment memo, please reach out to Kirsten and pass it on to her. But obviously, the lot line changes taking away frontage on the, on the public road on, on Old Church. It does sound like they have access rights to Lost Nations, but I'd ask Judd to take a look at that to confirm. The other items are, you know, since this lot's getting smaller and while it it does meet the minimum gross lot area requirements for the underlying zone, the town has buildable area requirements. So in addition to meeting the gross lot area requirement, you have to have a certain amount of land. According to the zoning code, that's quote unquote, buildable. And that's land that is not wetlands and is land that is less than fifteen percent slope. So the applicants conducted a wetland delineation, wetlands delineated here. And then these areas that are shaded with this crosshatch are the slopes. The contiguous buildable area has to be contiguous. It's, and within that area, you have to be able to build your house. The septic system. So you know, this does look, the remaining land still looks, you know, relatively steep. Or maybe the area that's hatched is, is this land that's not as steeply sloped. I'm not quite sure. But the bottom line is they have to demonstrate that this lot will remain zoning compliant. The remainder lot will remain zoning compliant due to the fact that the buildable area may be being reduced. And that they can get access off Lost Nations Road. While, you know, access Old Church would require a crossing of the stream. It's relatively flat. This is more steeply sloping. But they kind of have to.
You, the town would never have let me take a driveway from Zero Old Church Lane, crossing over a stream and going through wetlands and finding. I mean, look, when I bought the property, there was a, there was a Board of Health and a buildable lot. I mean, I've been paying taxes on a buildable lot. And what I'm saying is that, you know, according to the survey, he mapped it out. You could see the fifty feet setbacks and everything else. There's a pretty flat area in that factor. Yes. There are slopes and rocks, but there are, there is that one area. Now, you just, you know, I'll meet somebody out there. That's no problem. You know, just to go over it. But, I mean, they would never have let me build a house through a stream and wetlands and put a driveway through there.
So I think what, Jan, you're saying that we, the building inspector is the person that really makes that determination. So I think what we need to do is refer this to the building inspector and ask.
Yeah, there almost needs to be some additional information provided before the building inspector will be able to determine whether the remaining lot is zoning compliant. They have not yet.
Okay.
They have not yet calculated the remaining buildable area for, for that lot. Through the exercise of delineating the wetland, creating the slopes, but if there's.
Here's the other thing, though, is that I've already beaded him that property when we were, went to closing. Now, I'm not looking to build a piece of property right, you know, tomorrow. You know, so it's still going to be four acre zoning, whether I keep it as a vacant lot or not. I just need him to have the lot line changed so that the tax map is different. I'm paying a little bit less taxes and he owns, you know, and he's got his his law, his real, his property, you know, with the town. So like right now, we're not, we're not looking to like turn around tomorrow and build on it, you know, you know what I'm saying?
That's not the point. The point is that at some point, when there is a decision to build there, that it is a buildable lot. And we're not creating some situation now where there is not sufficient contiguous area. So there needs to be, I think, from my point of view, a layout, whether it's a two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom, you know, house that can be shown on that plan. And what about, John, what about deep hole test to determine? And what about, John, what about deep hole tests to determine sufficient septic capacity? Is that something we'd look for now in this exercise, or can that wait until later?
That's going to really depend on the health department, this plat would need to be signed by the health department as part of like the, the process, and, and they may very well want to see this, you know, the septic area proved, proved out, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think you're, you're right on just trying to understand how this lot would be developed in the future, it's not going to be, obviously, the, the final development plan, but, you know, make sure that you can get a driveway off Lost Nations Road, where would the house go, where would the septic go, and understand how the, the lot would be developed. And we certainly can't, the board can't make a determination on a lot line change if, if that lot line change is going to result in non-conformity or exacerbating an existing non-conformity.
Yeah.
Lot needs 40,000 square feet of buildable area, and it has it now, but they're lopping off a section of the property, and it's going to result in a parcel that has 35,000 square feet of buildable area, well, that's, that's resulting in a non-conformity, I don't know if that's the case, but that's what needs to be proved out here.
Right, the applicant that was speaking, that's Mr. Albert?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you mentioned before that this was subdivided and determined to be a buildable lot, you know what?
No, it was never subdivided, I, I owned, I owned all of Zero Old Church Lane, it was never subdivided, but when I bought it, it was a buildable lot, and, and, you know, they had a, they had a, there was an old plan with a house on it, but the house was on it in an area where now they're calling it wetlands, but I, I don't know, maybe in 1988 it wasn't wetlands, I, I don't know, I mean, that's the whole problem also.
Yeah, but it's clear to me...
They had the driveway, I'm sorry, what?
No, no, it's, it's clear to me that we're starting from ground zero here, you know, there's, there's been no sort of justification, if you will, or proof that this new lot, as depicted, is going to meet the criteria, that has to be done.
Okay.
Which is, Jan, my, my suggestion, this will have to be reviewed by the building department eventually, maybe, maybe the productive exercise would be, we make the referral, but we recognize and we encourage the applicant to engage immediately in, you know, in a dialogue with Jan and with the building inspector, you know, to, to move that piece along.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fine to me, I mean, I'll talk to Jan tomorrow, or if that's all right with you, Jan, and then we could, you'll tell me who to get in contact with, and I'll can meet people out there, we can survey the land.
Yeah, we could have a Zoom meeting with the inspector and go, and go through it.
Okay, great.
I think, I think in your memo, Jan, you also said this would have to be referred to the county planning board, is it too early to do that?
I think you could send it off, that's because of the proximity to the municipal boundary line with Pound Ridge, the property being within 500 feet of a municipal property line requires referral to the planning board, so that, that, I think that could be, that could take place now.
Okay. And again, oh, go ahead.
The notification-only referral, so it's, Kirsten knows what that means, but it's, it's going to be something that could take place now.
Great, and do we need to just get the consensus of the board, or what, what for that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's not a motion, that's simply, if the board is in agreement, if there's consensus, we can just have Kirsten do that.
Okay, so...
I can stop sharing, Jan.
What's up?
Stop share.
Stop sharing, so we can see the faces of people, so I can get whether or not we've got consensus.
There you go.
So, I guess Greg, are you okay with that? And Rich, and he's nodding yes, and Jerome, yes, thumbs up, all right, and I too, so we're going to refer it to the, to the county planning board, and do we need to do anything formal to get it to the building inspector again, or is just our, our recommendation here, fine, you're muted, Judd.
Jan, can I call you tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and the answer is same, same process.
Okay, so everyone, let's see, I guess by thumbs up if you're okay sending it to the, or nods that you're okay sending it to, referring this to the building inspector. Okay, two, three, four, okay, four thumbs up, so off it goes. All right, so I think, I think we've moved a little bit more forward here, and the resubmission date, I think you've already heard, for, to be on the October meeting would be September 29th. Great, thank you, so the next...
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the wetland permit review, calendar number 46-20WP. I apologize in advance if I don't get this right, the Mech Ekran residence, 38 Gilbert Street, South Salem, an application for reconstruction of a sunroom and deck. And Michael, I think, are you or...
Yes, I am, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Dan and Devin are on with us, first time I've seen Dan without a mask, he's a good-looking guy. They purchased this property at 38 Gilbert Street back in May of this year. The house, as you may know, built in probably 1925, a sunroom was added probably in the 1970s, some 40, 50 years ago. It was of moderate or poor quality when it was built, and certainly not energy efficient. And Dan and Devin want to, to take that down and replace it with another sunroom of exactly the same dimensions. The real problem with it is, is that the foundation, two-thirds of the foundation sit on a slab on grade, and then the remaining one-third of the foundation, one closest to the lake, is supported only by lolly columns. So, they want to put in a, a real modern foundation around the entire base of the, of the replacement sunroom. It's a single-story sunroom now, and it'll be a single-story sunroom when we're done. The other project that triggers a wetland permit is the deck that's off the sunroom. It, again, it's reached its, it's probably its maximum age and usefulness, and they want to take it down and build a new deck, almost exactly the same depth or width extending to the lake, it currently is 11 foot 8 inches, and their, their architect has designed a replacement deck of 12 foot 6 inches, so it's just under a foot longer or wider, depending on how you define it. Dan tells me he can split screen and, and give you a quick view of the drawings of existing conditions and of the proposed conditions, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Michael, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks everyone for giving us this time, just quickly, here's a few photos of the, of the house and the area that we are talking about that Michael just described, this is the existing, what we call the sunroom. The deck is out here, east of the sunroom, the, the house faces toward the east, so, and this really is very poor quality construction, plus the finished ceiling height inside is only seven and a half feet tall, which isn't, I'm told, doesn't actually comply with building code. So, our plan is, as Michael said, to demolish this part, and we want to change and actually decrease the slope of the roof, and the effect that will have on the wetlands is an area of land disturbance of approximately 800 feet to demolish that slab and put in a proper foundation, the, the footprint of the sunroom itself is only about 400 feet, so when it's finished, it will, it will just be covering 400 feet, and then these are tiers to support the, the new deck that we'd like to build. And just to give you a bit of a sense, having seen the photos, by, by making the roof less steep, it will actually give the, the house a bit more of a face in this direction, we're planning a metal roof for this portion that is over the living room with three skylights here and one in the kitchen area, and then the roof over the sunroom is essentially a flat roof, and we would like to do a green roof with either moss or sedum, which actually would have soil on it, so our, our consultant on that advises that in a, in a one-inch rainstorm, the roof itself would, would capture about 125 gallons of water, so it's, it's a partial mitigation for the disturbance, but we're happy to do a good deal more in the way of mitigation, to extent that Jan thinks that would be appropriate. So, that's it in a nutshell, if anyone has any questions.
Great, thank you, I just, I wanted to make, make sure I understood correctly, when, I think Michael talked about putting a proper foundation underneath, it is not going to be a full basement, it is just going to be a more, you know, not on slab, a sort of a crawl space area.
It will, it will, yeah, it will definitely be a crawl space area, it will have, it will have footings, which you need structurally, and then it will have a concrete wall, we plan to, to face the exposed walls on the north and south with stone, which is consistent with the style of the rest of the house, but the space under the sunroom itself will have a crawl space, it's only about 36 inches tall, so it's not usable basement, it is just there so you can get to the plumbing and electrical to repair them if you need to.
Great, okay, thanks for that clarification, I think we have a, a comment letter from Jan on this, if that's correct, Jan?
I didn't really have any real substantive comments, as indicated, the, the footprint of the sunroom is remaining the same, the roof area is remaining the same, there's a slight increase in, in the deck, but that's pervasive and really not significant. Some comments about, you know, providing a zoning table on the plan and having the plan signed and sealed, and additional information about the neighboring properties and where structures are, but really nothing, really see any issue with what's being proposed, at the end of the day, it's going to be very similar to what's there now, just built better. There's indication of where the roof downspouts are located on, on the building, question where are they actually discharged, are they foundation side flash blocks, or are they piped in any manner across the property? Other than that, I, I really don't have any, any significant comments on it, on it. I didn't, I didn't know about the green roof, that sounds great.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't clear on that either, and I think that is good, typically, I'd like to see around lakes, some shore, shoreside or shoreline plantings if possible, or, or anything to keep lawn from running right into the lake, so perhaps some kind of mitigation, I, I am not sure what your front lawn or, the front lawn, the lakeside area looks like now, but, you know, perhaps a little mitigation there would be good. I'd like to also ask the board if we'd maybe stop screen sharing, so we can see each other a little bit better.
Yes, sorry.
That we have often asked for sort of regular septic inspections, if we've done something lakeside, but this isn't even, this isn't adding bedrooms or reconfiguring anything, I, I would like to see whether you feel that is something that we should request in this case. No, so Greg says no, Jerome, yes?
Well, yeah, I say no too, and I'm, I'm wondering if this ought to be referred for administrative approval, since it is a replacement, and it's, as Jan said, there's nothing substantive, substance in the way of environmental issues, except for temporary protection during construction, I'm thinking that this certainly could go administrative.
So, are you putting that...
That would be our preference, certainly, we'd like to get construction started before winter.
So, Jerome, did you put that in form of a motion?
I would make a motion that we move to turn this into administrative review process, given the, the replacement aspect and insignificant environmental issues.
And would you want to add that with, with mitigation as deemed appropriate by our consultant?
By our consultant, yes.
Okay, thank you, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Rich, any further discussion? Seeing none, and I should ask the CAC, do you have any comments? No, yes?
No, I mean, I just don't know if there's any runoff in stormwater issues that have to be looked at in addition to the regular mitigation, you know, usually with lakeside stuff, we always at least take a look at that, given the, you know, how old it is and everything, and, so I just raise that as something that ought to be looked at by Jan as well.
Okay, I think it's already part of the, I mean, he's talked about it with the, the leads, I guess I would ask, when you, when the new owners bought this, not realizing it was just purchased earlier this year, did you have the septic system inspected, and was it, you know, were there any comments about needing to upgrade it?
I'm glad you asked, I had a delightful conversation with the man who put in the new leaching field in 2015, including photographs and his map of exactly where that was, and then I, I was here and witnessed when they, it appears they put in a new tank, septic tank at that time as well, and I was here when Folger Brothers came and, and cleaned it out, and they said it's in, it's in great shape, and we planned out it clean once a year.
Okay, so I think that also helps me agree with the recommendations of Greg and Jerome, so any, any other questions or comments? Since this is a motion, I'm going to pull the board, Greg?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
And I also say yes as well, or I as well, so that's, the motion is approved to make this administrative, thank you very much, and welcome to town.
Thank you, we're thrilled to be here, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda are the minutes of July 21st and August 18th.
So... I read them both, they were ably and properly given to us, I would, without any further, do make a motion to approve both of, both, do you need a separate motion for reaching, or are we doing them together?
I think we can do them together, I think the four of us were on both of them, so...
I have one, one correction, I don't think I came in late, you had me there at 7:31, I was there on time. Sorry.
Oh, that's for Jerome.
Respect it, please.
Do you want to amend to correct the record to reflect Jerome's promise to the meeting?
7:30 promise, yes, thank you. I second Greg's motion with that correction.
We should get a one-minute grace period.
We recognize it's always 5 o'clock somewhere, right, so...
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, reference to another subject.
Yeah, no, so, okay, so we, I'm sorry, we do, we have a motion, and it's been seconded to, for the minutes as amended, any further discussion?
Thank you for being on time, Jerome, at that meeting.
You're welcome.
So, Greg?
Yes, hi.
Rich?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
And I also approve the, the, also vote in favor, so the, that's four of us who have approved the minutes of July 21st and August 18th. Our next meeting is October 20th. And I don't have anything else, so I guess I would look for, yes, Jerome?
Well, I just came back from California where I visited with my eighth grandchild and Ida Bellin.
Congratulations.
Yeah, my, my daughter's first.
I'm very happy to hear that, I'm going to be joining you with number two, maybe tonight.
Whoa, well, good luck with that.
But you can't really do anything, you can't go to the hospital, so I may as well come to this meeting, right?
Right, and, you know, we kept it short just for you.
Yeah, thanks.
But, you know, possibly tonight, but, you know, it might be tomorrow or.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, and and to you.
Okay, I'm, we, during the meeting?
Second?
8:41.
Okay, and so, again, I'll go through, Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Hi, and best of luck to the grandpas.
Jerome?
Hi.
And I also say yes to joining the meeting and and wish everybody, you know, great, great futures, fortunes, and safety in this time, so, okay. Thank you all, I think we're making, we've almost made it under an hour, but not quite, so thank you all.
Yeah, good work.
Okay.